The meeting for May, what is the date is today, sixth of the planning board of the town of Westboro. My name is Hazel Nurse. I'm the chairman of the board. To my far left is Jenny Gingras, our town planner. Christina Kelleher next her, then John Fazoni, John Gelsich on my right, and Dirk Belido, who was our administrative assistant. This meeting is being televised on Westboro TV, so I'd like everyone to be aware of that. We have a fairly short agenda tonight, but so I think we'll just move right into it. The first matter is a hearing we had scheduled for 2:20 Turnpike Road. They have requested a continuance to 5:20 28, and their letter will become part of the record. The next item on our agenda is...
Hold on, you have to vote for the...
Oh, we, I'm sorry, we need to vote on the continuance. Are there any questions? I think they're still missing some things. And I think, I think we've not heard from, what is it, engineering maybe on this?
Yeah, so the comments from engineering were sent back to the peer reviewer. So now the peer reviewer is reviewing that and will edit their peer review, and then we'll send it to the applicant.
Okay, that's fine. Could I have a motion to approve the continuance?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right. Thank you for reminding me we needed to vote. And the second item, Jenny will give us a discussion of potential zoning articles for the fall 2025 town meeting. B chord.
Got some minutes to the minutes.
Okay.
Do you want me to redline it?
And print it out this one, okay. Are our screens working tonight? It looks like, ah, there it is, my goodness.
Yeah, I just don't see the chord for...
Yeah, it's all right, though.
I'm going to have to crane.
Okay. So... So I know we've been talking about the downtown zoning and whether to put it on the fall town meeting, which I think is possible. But before we do that, and I know I still need to meet with the zoning working group, I just wanted to make sure that the planning board is comfortable with the direction that we're going. To remind you, what we had done, we had the downtown plan, which gave recommendations on the zoning for the downtown, and part of it was to sort of modify the zones. And I'm going to pull up a map. You can see here, my very crude drawing, to modify the map to have one base district. Instead of, right now, we have the downtown district, we have an industrial district, we have the downtown planning overlay district, and then we have the gateway up here in purple, which is staying. I'm just pointing out where it is. So the recommendation from the downtown plan was to create that one base zone and eliminate this industrial zone here, which is the purple. The orange is the downtown. Then it would also include slightly expanding it beyond where it is over to Church Street, and then it would cut over on Phillips Street. There's another area here on High Street where it would include some of these parcels. And the reasons that they had made that recommendation were because some of those houses are multifamilies already, or they might have a small business in them. So those were the recommendations, and, you know, this will involve more public feedback to see if people are comfortable with that, particularly the expansion. I don't think creating one base district is, could have any potential issues because it's already the downtown district. It's just eliminating the industrial. And then this area here, I know we've come across the issue before where Baker Way is in the Gateway District and not residential. So this would potentially turn into residential, and then, so this would be the remaining Gateway District.
Will you go over that again? I mean, I know the Baker Way is all residential in there, that turquoise one we're talking about. And so what is the proposal for that? Is that going to become the down, part of the downtown area?
No, that would be zoned residential.
It would, just that little piece?
Just that piece.
And then the industrial, which is in the purple?
Without, this would go away completely. It would start again down here, further down the train tracks, because that links to the industrial area over where CSX is. It's off the map. I can pull up a larger map if you want, but it would cut off here. There's like a pallet place down here.
Why are we getting rid of the industrial zone?
Because the feeling was that it didn't really add any value to the downtown area, and we want to give it the potential for redevelopment. They had recommended things like maker spaces, potentially like small production where someone could have a retail store, and then also, for example, manufacturer chairs. I don't know, just like smaller type businesses in the downtown, that it wasn't really appropriate to have industrial.
My only concern is that it's been zoned industrial, and I think if we can improve it knowing by allowing other uses, that might, an industrial use at the very end, that might be the highest investment, what it is, but I think it's better. That's what's there currently. I would hate to...
Well, they can stay. This, you would be able to still stay, and if you resold it and kept the same use, you can do that as long as you don't vacate the use for two years. So this isn't kicking anyone out. For example, like the gas stations downtown. That's, I'll talk about that next, but that's...
Whatever space does go vacant, that's, that's what I'm saying. The space goes vacant there for more than two years.
Then they, then that use would no longer be a protected use.
I think the argument could be made, if this, if it's industrially zoned, and then the use goes vacant for two years, maybe industrial is not the best fit because they couldn't get another tenant.
It, I mean, it could be that. It could be that there's maybe other properties that are better suited.
It could be anything. I'm just saying, like, it's got a non-conforming protection for two years. I think that's not nothing.
I just says, from my expertise, I don't, I don't like that.
I understand what you're saying about keeping like all the options open. I think one of the other things to consider is the only access to that is like through the circle. And so do we want industrial accessing through the circle and creating traffic? Is that the best place for it? I'm fine with smaller industrial. I'm fine with like smaller manufacturing. But, and it's not a problem now, but if it stays industrial and somebody's like, oh, I'm going to put in something that's going to have trucks going somewhat frequently, that's not the best use for one entrance downtown road.
I think it's different now, given the tenant that's there today, but just if it's smaller industrial users, you're still going to have truck traffic. And just say that if you have 30 small industrial users that add up to that square footage, you're still going to have the truck traffic.
I mean, I can definitely look into it a little more.
Potentially, yeah.
That's, that's the only, you'll, you'll see the table of uses proposed in a second, but that's really the only real industrial use. The other one that's zoned industrial is Bay State Commons, and then there's a few parcels over here, like where the cell towers are, that that's zoned industrial, although it does have a downtown planning overlay. So we're expanding the uses that they could have, but under downtown, not under industrial. That was the feedback from the public, that they would rather see smaller businesses come in. Any other?
Well, it's a good point. I mean, I think, you know, obviously, we don't want to shut off a use for marketing purposes that might be useful in that particular area. So, you know, the question is, you know, I think John's...
It's not like we have land, you know what I mean? It's not like we have land that we're trying to develop that could be a big... I just, I feel like taking away the use, you know, the...
Non-conforming.
I still, I feel like, you know, whoever owns that bought that knowing it's industrial. Trucks going through the center of town, one building.
Yeah, but you've got two years, don't forget. I mean, I think the thing is the fact that if it's not sold to a similar kind of business within two years, then that's going to be a problem for who's trying to sell it anyway. So maybe at that point, since it wasn't used, reused for the same use, I would think that, you know, that makes sense in that situation, because then you can't, you know, you've given them two years to put a similar type business in. If they can't find a similar type business, well, then maybe it's, the time has come to market it for something totally different, which might be better in that particular area for the downtown area. So that's why I, you know, sort of thinking about both sides of that. I think maybe I, right, they've got two years to, you know, to deal with that. So I guess my feeling is to, they've got the two years and...
Yeah, like my, my other concern is it's not necessarily the people that are there now, because they can continue operating. It's the future uses. If we keep it industrial, yeah, it's one building now, but in the future, it might not be one building. And it might be a more heavily intense industrial use because it would be allowed. That is a problem connecting to the downtown. If it's a couple of trucks from this use, that's, that it is what it is. That's what we have now. But if we're changing the zoning to include industrial moving forward, that opens it up to any industrial use that would be allowed, and that's not what's on the site now.
I guess if we were more specific, defining industrial.
Yeah, well, I think the table of uses will probably have more of a, because like breweries are allowed there, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
But I'm not saying like as, like retail type of industrial use, like what are like a manufacturer, like a food processor.
Yeah, I'll show, I'll show you the proposed table next. But I think for the feedback on this, I just want to make sure that, like, we're going to get feedback, more feedback from the public on this, but are you agreeable to these base districts instead of having the overlay districts? Is, am I going in the right direction?
I think anything, quite frankly, we can cut down on these multiple districts that we have one on top of the other, which I find is totally inefficient. It's extremely difficult for anybody who's looking to come into this town to figure them out. I can't figure them out, because every one of them is sitting over another one because people did this all piecemeal. They didn't kind of look at it as a whole and say, okay, you know, let's just change the table of uses in this area and cover the whole thing, instead of just adding a new district. I mean, I've dealt with zoning codes over the years, and I have never seen one that had all these overlay districts.
Overlay should really be like single purpose.
Exactly. So I am all in favor of cutting out all these overlay districts.
Okay.
I would maybe want to take a look at the parcels chosen and smooth out those edges.
You mean for the zoning?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I hope you're not commenting some crude drawing.
No, not your drawing, no, but like, for example, like, I can point here, but like...
I think I know what you mean, like down here, for example, these on Green Street are half industrial. And so what we were thinking is make them completely residential here, where the property line is.
You've got that little bump up on High Street, right, that includes those five parcels. If we're going to include those, why not just include the ones across and just draw that line across, that property line?
Yeah, okay.
Or, we're not including those residential properties on Milk Street that might, I mean, you're probably not going to get any type of use there. I mean, that's relatively steep. But who knows, maybe there's going to be a mixed-use type development that can go there, and a restaurant can locate there or, you know, something. So if we want to include that as part of the district, you know, like kind of include more of the area as downtown.
Are you saying like past the mill?
No, we're, we're on High Street.
Oh, I thought you said milk, I'm sorry.
Not milk, yeah. Yeah, the mill is, the mill is included from what I can see.
Yeah, the ones that go from Phillips to Boardman are included along Milk Street, but maybe we just go all the way up and include those residential there as well.
Along...
A lot of two-family...
On Bay Street?
I don't see, just like straight down.
Yeah, I don't see why not. If that, if that's all considered walkable to downtown, then you'd want to encompass it.
I guess, yeah, I want to see the, the table of uses, because if residential isn't allowed use in the downtown district, I would, I would want to expand that even more and have mixed use in those neighborhoods.
Yeah, run it, you run it all the way across from School Street, Dan. I mean, I would square it out so that it was a more...
If residential isn't allowed use in the, is residential allowed use? Yeah, so I mean, if that's the case, then I would make it bigger. After more properties give more of, more options for people to develop.
Okay, I'll take a, a look at that, and we're going to be having some tables at, like, the farmer's markets coming up and asking for people to comment on this map, similar to what we did at the Charettes, but just looking for more public feedback on what they think about, what types of uses they want to see. Because I wouldn't expect like a, I think the fear would be a business, ton of businesses going in down here in the residential area.
There's always, there's always the panic, that you're going to either have a business go in or that the town is going to have some control over my house.
Yeah.
That's where, you know, people really freak out, because they're so afraid that, you know, if your zoning district is changed, does this mean that the town has some control over my house? Particularly in the residential areas. So, you know, it's just one of those fears that you really have to allay when you're looking at changing the zoning, which is going more into the residential areas.
Yeah, I think the argument to be made there, though, is, you know, downtown is mixed use. Organically became mixed use before zoning was a thing. So if we allow, you know, all these uses that were previously allowed before zoning came in to just kind of be there and develop as they should or as they want to, then you're going to get up more of what you, what people usually like about downtown, right?
Does it go out to the senior, the current senior center?
No, that is, it goes out, so approximately where Baker Way is, it turns into Gateway. And then at Lyman Street, it goes back in the residential, and the, the senior center is...
It's above Rogers Street.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Here.
That piece.
Somewhere over here.
Yep.
No, it's, it's the building in, in the Rogers Field right next to the parking lot.
Oh, yeah, here.
The green, yeah.
Yep, here.
And what is the purple area again? That, is that going to be, that's going to be folded in or that's going to stay Gateway?
It's currently Gateway, and so, I mean, we can explore whether you want to just encompass it, but the purpose of the gateway was to allow for less intense uses as you're moving from a residential zone to a commercial zone. It kind of trickles in some things that are allowed. There's limits on the square footage of a, a commercial business. It's like 4,000 square feet for, if you want a retail business. It's just to kind of ease people into it now.
To transition to the Route 9.
It's a transition, right.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I think, I, I don't have questions until I see the overlay, I think, or not the overlay, the use.
I think, I, I don't have questions until I see the overlay, I think, or not the overlay, the uses.
Okay, yeah, we can go into that. This, I'm just really, this is to look for feedback if I'm going in the right way. So this is, so let me start with our use table. No, that's about the dimensional table, never mind. There are some things on here that the use table, it wasn't clear or it lacked. It didn't reference anything. So we thought that if we're changing it for downtown, then now's the time to make the edits as we go through. Not substantially to whether a use is allowed or not, but more so cleaning up. Like, there's this column called All Others. In talking with the building commissioner and the community development director, we've never gone to look at All Others. It's either an overlay, which has its specific bylaw, or there's a base district. Another small thing is like G2. I guess the history is that Gateway 2 is because there used to be a Gateway 1, or it was brought up at some point but didn't pass, but Gateway 2 did. So the thought was we can eliminate the 2. That's just a small edit.
Would you mind just going down the line with the abbreviations?
Oh, here?
Yeah.
C is conservation, R is residential, AA is garden apartment, BA is highway business, G is gateway. This is the downtown one, and it was called BB. And it's because they named the commercial districts A and B. So highway business is business A, downtown business is business B. So I changed it to DD for downtown district, but, I mean, we can name it whatever we want. And then industrial A, industrial B, industrial C, which is really the transit-oriented village, industrial D, industrial E, municipal, which is like state-owned land, municipal 1 or M1, which is town-owned. AE is the senior living overlay. Depod is the downtown planning overlay district. And, and MUD is the mixed-use district.
Now, did you go through and figure out what All Others was? I mean, is there, is some sort of list where you, I mean, why do you need All Others? In other words, what are All Others?
I honestly could not find a reason. I looked at the overlay districts, thinking maybe it was the overlay districts, but the overlay districts have their own bylaws, which explain what's allowed. So it was probably just leftover. I, I don't, I don't know.
That's in there now?
Yep. The changes in red are stuff that I'm recommending to delete. Green is recommending adding based on the downtown plan.
You're taking out the depod.
And then this, this one, we have a, a use that's called conversion of existing structure, single-family dwelling to more than two-family dwelling, which is very general. And so we just said a conversion of existing single-family dwelling to up to four-dwelling units. So like a conversion of a historic home is typically what we would see. The one down, I can't remember the name of that street.
Yeah, the cross on the stage of the gas station.
Yes, yeah, he did a beautiful job of renovating.
High Street, High Street.
High Street, yeah.
The corner of, yeah.
Yeah, I, I can't remember what, how many units it used to have.
And it was apartments originally, because my husband's aunt and uncle, when they, my uncle, when he came home from the war, Second World War, they lived in an apartment in that, in that building, which is the only reason it happened.
Yeah.
What happened to the building? But I think there were three apartments in there, I think there always had been.
One of the most, more recent tenants in the building.
Two comments. One, I would like to compare all five industrial districts to see how different they actually are, and maybe we can combine some, because five industrial districts seems excessive. Not under this effort, but in the future. And then the up to four-dwelling units might be confusing, because do we allow multiple principal buildings on one lot?
No.
No.
Okay, cuz that, so to me, if I'm interpreting that, that's telling me that I might be able to put four standalone units on a lot.
Oh, no, I think it means like four dwelling units within principal residence.
Right, but then I would say up to a four unit, or worded differently, so that it's like a four-unit structure, a four-dwelling unit structure kind of thing, to clarify.
Okay, yeah, the purpose of that was like conversion of a historic single-family, which had six bedrooms or whatever.
No, I, I, yeah, I understand. I'm just saying, moving forward, that might be confusing to people to be like, oh, I can, why can't I put four townhomes on this? That being said, do we have any districts that allow townhomes? That's something to consider.
Do we have what?
UOV.
Any districts that allow townhomes?
UOV.
Was that, is that something that we could include in the downtown district?
It's right here, townhouse or rowhouse.
Oh, perfect.
That was a recommendation from the downtown plan.
Awesome.
Now, we're, I don't see, is accessory units are not in this particular, that's just, that's gonna be an accessory use?
Accessory dwelling units?
Those are by...
The new accessory one, that's gonna be at a different table?
We don't necess, we don't need a, a table for, it's just a protected use anywhere where a single-family, single-family units, dwellings are allowed by right.
I don't know, I'd sort of like to see it, I mean, it, it would be helpful, I would think, if someone were looking at the table and, you know, then you have to go and ask whether you have an accessory use. I mean, other zoning tables usually define an accessory use in a table. I mean, the fact that they're allowed in certain districts and not allowed in other districts. So usually you see it standard in a table, you see accessory dwelling uses kind of thing. I mean, I, it may not be...
You don't have to decide now, we can, we'll be thinking about this, but yeah, I can look into that. Other, other things that, like mobile homes, it's no across the board. And when you have a use that is not allowed, it's, you don't have to list it. If there's a use that's not on here, then it's not allowed.
Right, but we don't have accessory, I mean, you see what I'm saying?
But accessory, so like, these are all principal uses.
Principal uses.
Accessory is by definition...
An accessory use, right.
Do we have a statement in the zoning that says anything not explicitly allowed is prohibited?
We have a use variance option.
No, but like for, if we take the mobile homes off, do we have a statement that says anything that's not explicitly allowed is...
I'll reference back, but I, we do allow use variances in the bylaw, which I know is pretty rare for a town to do. So I think there's something in there.
No wall band does that. Do they? Yeah, but the, the difference is that if it's not in there, their zoning board allows for a variance for that, where I know...
That's how we are too.
That's how Hopkinton is too.
But the zone, like the zoning board here will give a variance?
Yeah, they will.
That's just my, my only concern with...
I just don't, I don't know legally if we take the use off the table, but don't have a statement saying if it's not here, it's prohibited, then what does that mean? Does that mean that it could be allowed in certain situations?
Go to ZBA and get, you know.
I would be surprised if we don't have a statement like that. It seems like it's pretty boilerplate for zoning.
I'll double check.
Yeah, just to make sure.
Some of the other things were like, we had mixed-use residential slash commercial with industrial components, that was existing, and it's allowed by special permit in the TOV, because the TOV is technically in the industrial zone, but the TOV's an overlay. So I added a use for mixed-use residential and commercial. I'm not sure of the history of why that was in there. It was something to do with the, the TOV, because you do allow mixed use there, like Village Commons, that building, that commercial building could be an industrial use technically. I mean, he'd have to come to the, back to the board, but...
If we hypothetically, let's say if someone wants to do a mixed-use development downtown, but wants to have some type of major space on the first floor, like how, how are we classifying that?
Yep, those are separate, I'll, I'll go down to that, yep. That's okay.
Yeah, Jenny...
Those are good questions, yeah.
Jenny, going back, if, if we're gonna take out the senior overlay district, then we have to take out the senior overlay district, don't we?
We're not taking out the senior overlay.
We're leaving that one. So it's just the downtown overlay that we're...
Right, we're just deleting the downtown planning overlay.
Also delete All Others, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't delete it here, because I put the question, I wanted to button up my research. But from what I've found so far, there's nothing. This one, you can see there's some archaic, I'll call it, uses, like farm with pigs, animals raised for pelts.
I mean, I was thinking we should do that in the residential districts, so that...
Allow it, just... Well, technically... Technically, farms are protected agricultural use anyway. But I guess if you're downtown, you know, you can't have a farm with pigs.
But this says that you can with a special permit.
You can, current, SP is special permit. So if someone in highway business wanted to have a farm with pigs...
But what's S?
SP is special permit.
This is for a special permit through ZBA. SP is planning board.
That, would we wanna work with the, the zoning board then on, no, leave it alone? Okay, whatever. I mean, I guess maybe a while ago, before everyone started getting chickens, I might have been like, no, okay.
It is interesting that like, that same use needs special permits for several districts.
But depending on what district it is, it's a different board.
Yeah, it is.
Why?
Yeah.
It doesn't make any sense.
This is your zoning, guys. And again, this started out with looking at the downtown, but then it was like, well...
If we're gonna go through, we should just clean up as much.
Yeah, so we can do more of that too in the zoning working group, and then come back to this board with the recommendations. But I, so the reason I'm going again over this with you guys is because I wanna make sure that you're okay with this direction. I started out writing a separate bylaw for the downtown, but then I realized that it's just another way, another thing to refer to, instead of just putting it all in the underlying. And I think when we get a phone call from someone that wants to open up a business, they don't necessarily look in the bylaw to see if there's a separate bylaw. They look at the table of uses. And so it's just a little more friendly. But let me go down to the ones that are really about the commercial uses. So don't panic why some of these are crossed out, they're just expanded. So like motor vehicle service station, it's moved. The downtown plan just recommended separating these out. So for commercial uses, it was separated out into office, retail, industrial, and then accessory uses, so...
I like that, I like how that's working.
Yeah.
Makes it work better.
Do I get to keep my farm?
As long as you don't raise animals for pelts.
We don't. At least our cows are good.
So that's why that, it looks like that, that you see some of these things crossed out. It's not that we're eliminating them, it's that I'm moving them around. So these were the ones recommended, that John, I was talking about, like the maker workshop. And there are definitions that are in the downtown plan that you can see. I'll send out to everybody, but there's things like that artisanal production, the fabrication with accessory retail is like the small furniture shop I was talking about. Like maybe they make custom chairs, and they have a retail shop. Some of these things may be allowed under the current zoning, but one of the recommendations from the downtown plan was that because we don't name them, when someone's looking at our use table to see if they wanna do business here, they, it doesn't look like they're allowed. So we need to be a little bit more specific, but still allow some flexibility for interpretation.
Why can't you make a thing like, like retail with manufacturing component or something? Why is this the, the direction that like artisanal?
So that it's not large, right? So that it's not more like regular industrial, yeah.
You want an, you want active storefronts, you want people to be able to walk by and want to go in the shop, you know, things that will bring people downtown. Not necessarily like an office.
I would take out the, I think fabrication with, sorry, probably can't hear me. Fabrication with accessory retail is fine, but I would say bike repair workshop, take that out, maker workshop, shared kitchen. And then we should just really get a good definition for those and put those new definitions into the bylaw. Because if we're just doing examples, that's not gonna, I think that's gonna confuse people, to your point of like, they're gonna look at the table, oh, is my use allowed? No, only the bike repair workshop is allowed.
So take out the parentheses?
I would take, except for like the fabrication with accessory retail, or actually, yeah, I would take out all of that, and then put those into a definition, so that artisanal production is defined as X, Y, and Z in the bylaw.
Okay.
And then I would also, I think parking facility should probably be special permit everywhere. And performance space, I would make it by right in the downtown. Like a music hall, like a, a community theater.
Yeah, I just, I really just took a random stab at some of these, because...
If you don't wanna go, I can go and go through this and make notes, if you don't wanna do that right now.
Yeah, I think that would be better, and I guess...
Does parking facility mean both indoor and outdoor?
Parking, I'll have to go back to the definition, I don't remember. They, they did give us definitions. Some of these didn't reference anything, like the special, they were footnotes without anything that, they didn't go to anything.
We had so many footnotes in this bylaw that they just lost meaning after that.
I crossed out the where a restaurant involves a drive-through or walk-up, because they recommended that to be its own use. And then, so the office uses, it did break it up. And these are recommendations, so if we feel like we wanna go back to just office and, and have a definition that includes all of these things, I think that's fine.
I think that would be better.
Okay.
It's all the same across the board, right?
Yeah, I just kept it the same for, for this purpose. We can get into the weeds on it.
If I'm looking at this, like, what's the difference between general office and professional office?
Exactly, that's, so I think if you just, yeah, we can define this through definitions, it's a better way to do it. And I think it's clearer to people, because if you can look up in a definition and find what something is, you know, you can put more than one example in there so that people have an idea of what you're talking about, and not try to cram it into this little space here we have.
Yep, okay. And then these were the retail uses that were recommended from the downtown plan, except for a couple of them that I had moved down. Like this one here was already in there, display and sale of natural products, a significant portion of which are raised by the proprietor in Westboro. Don't ask me what that means.
I think we can come up with a really cool term, like Westboro local production or something like that, and then define it as the...
Yeah. But see, you can, you can see here like restaurant, brew pub, small-scale food service. We do have the definitions they recommended for those. Micro nano brewery or distillery. And then the auto-oriented uses, so motor vehicle repair service. It was recommended, and, you know, from public feedback, to make that not an allowed use in the downtown, and give them a higher and better use to do by right, so that eventually they'll... you know, hopefully sell and become something else.
And they'll get the same two-year thing as it is. I mean, in other words, we're stuck on that.
I think on that, we might want to do some outreach to the auto uses, not necessarily the gas stations, but the repair shops that are downtown and say, hey, this isn't going to change your use unless you move. Because they might start a opposition campaign if they feel like they're getting forced out.
They're on your list to go talk to.
I'll go talk to them.
No, we, we do, we want, we're going to, we have a, with the economic development ambassadors, we have broken it up into, everybody gets a chunk of businesses to go personally invite and, and talk to, so. But welcome to come, of course.
Yeah, no, I'm happy to go make rounds downtown.
Okay. These industrial utility uses are here. I mean, I can send this out to you all if you want to look at the rest of the stuff to, to think about it. Brewery, distillery, I'll, I'll have to look at the definition to see if that needs to change because we have the micro one allowed. I don't know why we need this table, other principal uses, and then it says other use having externally observable attributes similar to one of the above, as regulated above.
I don't think we need that.
All other uses are no. So I guess there's your answer, John. So I, I don't think we need that, but.
Sorry, I was just looking at some of those uses that I think lined up as like yes in the gateway and no downtown or vice versa.
Which one?
In the industrial utility uses. Research laboratory.
Yeah, that's currently what it is. It's, I mean, you all can consider and this is.
I would be more permissive about that kind of stuff.
I would too. I mean, you're looking not just at research labs, but I also think of, for example, in a doctor's office when they, you know, need blood tests looked at, that kind of thing. I mean, that's a kind of small business that would do very well.
Yeah, I mean, the old Reliant, the old Reliant office has been vacant for what, two years now?
Exactly, yeah. See, and that sort of thing is, I think definitely is something that should be listed as a possibility. The other thing is that if these things are listed, you may have someone that is looking at various communities, see what kind of uses are available. And if they see something like this and they see that some of these, you know, spark, they may think, oh, this town, you know, is looking favorable on X sort of business and let's go look there. So I think we want to make it as user-friendly as possible so that people really have an idea of what is allowed and what we're thinking about.
Okay. And then these, so there is an area for accessory uses. I mean, we can look at adding accessory dwelling unit. I hadn't considered it before. But these ones in green were ones recommended by the downtown plan. Off-site accessory parking facilities, so I think like off-site parking, like maybe a parking garage or something like that. Drive-through facility, a food hall or public market, farmer's market, a mobile food market. So if, you know, food trucks wanted to have an area to gather together. Shared transport station, so like a bike share where you could go and rent a bike. Parklet.
Can you scroll up just a little bit so I can see the header?
I was just gonna say, can we, can we make sure that?
Yeah. So.
Yep.
Okay.
I can zoom out if it's not gonna be too small, but.
Well, I guess outdoor cafe use for downtown, was that a no?
These are accessory uses. Yeah, so that's, where do you see that?
Go down to the bottom. I was just trying to follow the line, so I think it's like the second to last, or maybe the outdoor cafe.
Oh, yes, that's outdoor seating. Like if you have an existing cafe and you want outdoor seating, we do have a policy that allows it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was, I had misaligned it. I thought that that was the.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'll add the header. But, um, yeah, so.
And I think some of these can be, some of these can be combined, I think. If you look at something like, I can't figure out the difference out there. I think we ought to look more, you know, I'm looking at food hall or public market and then I'm looking at farmer's market, vendor's court, and mobile food markets. Well, mobile food market is a food truck, it's not a market. But that just is my own feeling, but I think we need to look and make sure there aren't, that we can't categorize things a little better and then looking at uses within the various districts.
Because, so I read that as food hall or public market as like a permanent structure versus farmer's market and mobile food markets are not. However, vendor's court reads to me as more consistent.
Yeah, I do have the definitions that John sent out. You can see, this is all from what they recommended, but we are of course able to modify it however you want.
I would be happy to come up with some definitions.
I'll just give it to you.
And a food hall or a public market. A food hall or a public market is an allowed use under the commercial use, so it's sort of the same thing.
Yeah.
So I, I don't know why you have a separate category for that.
How would a food hall be accessory? Like what would that be accessory to?
Yeah.
A market?
Yeah.
Like what's your public market?
I'm, I'm thinking like an office. Like I've been in office buildings, in Woburn they have one where they have a medical offices and doctors' offices, but then on the first floor, they actually have a food hall where it's like a, kind of like a cafeteria, like a mall food court, but in an office building.
But that's just serving that particular office building?
No, the public can come in also. Yes. Yep.
Well, let's look at.
Would it make more sense then to just include? No, actually, yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
You've got it as an accessory.
We'll continue.
Yeah, we can, so you all haven't even seen the hard part that I.
It's better like I'm word smithing this.
So I said a hypothetical with the potential sale of the senior center that ever comes to be, how does the zoning change for that site? So right now it's, it would be M1?
It's not, I don't think it's zoned M1. Let me pull it up because it was up here. Let me look.
That, I'm sure.
It actually might be M1.
That property is owned by the town.
Yeah, so if it.
Yeah, so it's zoned M1.
And if they sell it to a private developer, what does the zoning become?
We would have to change the zoning at town meeting.
Okay.
Just, just like you, I mean, if you wanted to sell it, you'd have to get permission at town meeting. And then at that point, they would need to look at changing the zoning.
I didn't know if there was a way you can change that zoning now.
Right, as part of the gateway or something.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was just thinking, like, well, we draw the lines.
Like a park. Like a little park. It's like a pocket park.
Yeah, but then.
It would be coming up soon.
It's a park lot.
Potentially.
I don't know enough about it to know what even zone we'd want to change it to, you know. Okay, so the last thing on the downtown. First, I'm going to show you what our current zoning is for the, the dimensional tables. So we have a dimensional schedule that's actually broken up into two. We have for all building and residential and conservation districts and residential buildings in other districts and senior housing in the senior overlay. So if we have someone come in and wants to know what their requirements are for a single-family home in a residential district, it's under this all other.
Okay, well, nobody knows that.
Nobody knows that.
Wait, can you say that again?
I have to tell you, that is, that is the most confusing.
Well, wait, it gets more confusing. So this is, so Christina asked if I could just repeat that. So if someone comes in and they want to build a single-family home, they would go under this all other here. Because this is for all building and residential and conservation districts. R garden apartment, R is residential, garden apartment, and C is conservation and residential buildings in other districts and senior housing in the senior. So it encompasses a lot here. And then on top of that, there's this many footnotes.
Oh, yeah.
I have never seen a zoning code that did not list as far as dimensional requirements. They start out with residential as the first one.
Right.
And then they do the other ones from there.
Well, you'll be impressed in a second then. So then part B is non-residential buildings in non-residential districts. So if you're building a non-residential building in the highway business, this is what you go by. But then there's also the D pod, there's the mixed-use overlay, and then it doesn't include all. And one of the weird things here is that multifamily, in the multifamily bylaw, it references that they go by section B here, which is non-residential buildings in non-residential districts. So it's your zoning.
Okay.
So you can see how there's lots of little things that have happened that were confusing. So what I did is this, and, oh, I'm sorry, also footnotes.
We had a few notes.
Let's not make fun of the footnotes. Some people work really hard on those footnotes.
They do.
So I'm gonna, I have to zoom out here so you can see this. So what I did was I put it all on one table, and I know this looks like a lot, but it's honestly easier to read for us. I included the conservation district, the residential district, garden apartment, senior overlay, highway business, the gateway. This is the downtown, what they had recommended, all of the industrial, M and M1, senior mud, so I put it all on one table. And then I reduced a lot of the footnotes. A lot of them just said reserved. A lot of them didn't really reference any, like go, go to anything. Some of them, I couldn't really, I could put them together and it didn't really matter. At first I thought this would be, cause some issues because, you know, you have the non-residential and the residential in the commercial or something like that. But it really doesn't because, for example, like the downtown district. If you had a single family in the downtown district, then the, the zoning would be that 50,000 square feet requirement for the lot size now. But with this change, we would make everything the same lot size requirement. And that was the recommendation from the downtown plan. So that's the only thing that you kind of have to think about.
What is the, what is the NR mean, non-residential?
Not required.
Not required, okay. I never would have, I never, never would have known.
I would do NA. That's confusing.
Yeah, NA is, yeah.
It had NR in there, so I just kept with that, but I'm.
The one thing I'm thinking of with the downtown district is I'm fine with the 10,000 square foot minimum lot size. I would be okay with it going down even smaller. And then making a, we can discuss this to figure out, figure out how it would play out. But look at doing an FAR for residential uses in the downtown district.
So no lot size but an FAR?
No, like 5,000 square feet minimum lot size, but then residential would just be an FAR.
What's FAR?
So it's called floor area ratio.
Okay.
So like say a lot is 10,000 square feet.
Yep.
You could put a, and, and so the floor area ratio is one.
Okay.
You could do 10,000 square feet of house on that lot. And so it doesn't regulate the height, it just regulates the gross floor area of the house. So you could do, you know, half of the lot, two stories.
Okay.
And so, and you've still gotta meet the setbacks.
Right.
But if you did like an FAR of 0.5, you could have a, so like my old, my old property was 8,000 square feet. So if you had an FAR of 0.5, you could do a 4,000 square foot house on there, it might be taller, but you could also then do like a 2,000 square foot house as it fits on that lot. And so it basically adjusts to the lot itself rather than having a minimum lot size. Because like if I had, if I had a vacant lot that's 8,000 square feet, I couldn't do anything with it.
Right.
But if I have a vacant lot that's 8,000 square feet, I could put in a maximum square footage residential unit.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay.
I think it's easier for developers too.
Oh, it is. Yeah, because that makes sense.
And, and you've got some lots downtown that are tiny.
Yeah, minute.
And just to go a little off topic, not really.
And then one of the other things they recommended was like basically the amenities mean that you get a bonus, like for the height, you can go from 50 feet to 60 feet if you put in a few. They had a list of amenities they recommended. One was like affordable housing, but then there was also like a, a pocket park or a public bike parking and like stuff like that. Or something sustainable, you know, you could even do something like we did with the highway business. I can send you all of that.
One of the things I was, I had read years ago, I don't even remember where I found it. It was, it was an article about how the buildings that are more attractive and like historic would never be allowed under zoning.
Right.
Yeah.
You go into Boston, you've got these little nooks that are like newspaper shops that would never be allowed.
Yeah.
And so allowing that kind of stuff in the downtown or making it a little bit closer to that, I think, would give it a little bit more character and a little bit more.
Okay. So you, you like that this is all on one table?
Yes.
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 Okay, the last part with that is that in, so I'll start with originally, I was looking at the master plan and it talks about doing form-based code. Which is okay, but then it also kind of ties people to specific designs, at least from what I've been reading about it. And so I was thinking that it might be better to allow, to have design guidelines and standards instead, which are things that the, the planning board would approve outside a town meeting. It would still be a public hearing like you did your other regulations, but it would give more flexibility. And then the design review board is currently the reviewer for any architectural changes or things like that in the downtown. So they would still have that ability for the downtown.
Yeah, my inclination in thinking about this, we talked about it, is I, I mean, I basically just felt the design review board needed to be more involved in design of various things that are done in the town. And so there need to be some changes to the regulations or the bylaws allowing the, the design review board a larger area in which to kind of look at things. But I think maybe our best bet at this point is to get this zoning table and this part done and then look to change the regulations on design review next March. So that once we have this in place.
Okay, so.
Better trying to change design review now while we're also changing the zoning.
What if we changed the jurisdiction of the design review board to just be those districts? Like the downtown district, the gateway district.
Yep.
Yeah, that's the other possibility. We can do it fairly easily that way.
Right, yeah. Right now it's 2,500 square feet from the center of the rotary, or 2,500 feet from the center of the rotary, so it's that red circle. That's the jurisdiction of the design review board. But they, they don't look at residential uses, of course. It's commercial uses. So I was thinking a better way would be to just say downtown district and gateway district. And then Hazel had also suggested looking at multifamily projects.
Yeah, because my thought was that we've got this project coming in on Route 9 and I would like the design review board involved in the design of that particular project that's coming in. And this also does not, or would not have covered and doesn't cover the, the changes in the shopping center at Lyman, on Lyman Street. In other words, does. In other words, does, nobody, there's been no, essentially, designer view did not have a chance to look at the design of what was being done on that second floor and how it would look, and it should have.
Yeah, I agree.
So I guess my problem with that would be if we're gonna have multifamilies, like, say this, the post-road residential one comes in, right? And design review board has jurisdiction over that. And they give, they make them build a really nice building. It looks great. But then an auto dealer comes in and has the lot right next to them. They don't go through design review, and it looks like an auto dealer.
Well, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
I guess what's the point? If you're gonna have like a nice, nicely designed building, but then not a nicely designed building right next to it, it kind of takes away from the nicely designed building.
Well, the question is, you know, I'd like the design review board, look at all designs coming in. I mean, just, I don't know that's possible. I mean, the thing is that the design review board is really just making recommendations of planning board. The planning board has the final decision on any of these, all of these.
Oh, they don't issue any permits or any approvals?
Well.
For the sign, they do.
We approve, we give our approval and hand it over to the planning board, but doesn't mean the planning board can change it if they need to.
I think if that's the case, and I would, I would think we'd wanna explore having the design review board have jurisdiction over like the downtown and gateway districts where they can have limited approval.
Yeah, but the question is Route 9. I mean, that's, yeah, that's the other thing. It's just sort of food for thought. I don't know that we wanna think about this all the time.
Is this something you can bring to the design review board? Would they be open to having approval authority over, like downtown and gateway district to some extent, not full approval authority over the design? But then develop design standards for Route 9? So that every, but they wouldn't have to review? They would just have to say, here are the standards. If you, if you follow these standards, you're good?
Well, one of the, one of the things is, we do have architectural standards in this town, but it is, you know, like a book about this thick, which needs to be scrapped essentially and start all over with. So yes, they could rewrite the, the architectural guidelines as far as that goes. My only question would be, I think there ought to be an exception for things like the possible, the new post-road thing on Route 9. I would say there, there would be certain things outside the gateway area, the downtown area, on which the design review ought to have a chance to look at. I mean, one of the things we did was, we did do polting. Now, I'm not quite sure how or why, but we got to approve the polting development.
In that bylaw, it says that the proposal needs to go to the design review board.
Yeah, so as I said.
How could that work for this one that's gonna come in front of us now? Isn't it too late?
Yeah.
No, not too late of the one coming in front of us. We haven't even seen the plans for that yet.
But they've applied.
Yeah, but we don't, so I guess there's, there's an option that the planning board could add design review board as a reviewer to the application, but it wouldn't require the applicant to go in front of them to present anything, but it would be a chance for them to copy on the application, similar to how ATSC does that. The applicant doesn't go to ATSC, but ATSC gets a copy of the application, and they have a chance to review it and supply comments.
I think it's something to explore. I, I like that idea, but I just don't wanna overload the design review board and, and then have a nicely designed residential building that's going to probably increase the cost of that development, right? But then have a not nicely designed commercial building right next to it that's like, all right, we did all this nice work on this building, but then let that one.
Well, and the other thing is that we're not trying to burden the developer with having to go to extra meetings. So I mean, we're trying to balance that also, because we don't want them to have to appear before, you know, eight different bodies in town in order to get their approvals. So anyway, it's just something to think about, and maybe, as I said, maybe we need to wait till we get this part done, and this could be put off until March. But that was one thought I was having when looking at it.
That's, I mean, that's, I think, doable. I don't think I could, the only area that would change is the site plan review bylaw. I'd have to, I'd have to look, because I have to also cross-reference all of these changes throughout the whole bylaw.
Couldn't we, as a planning board, refer something to design review if we wish to?
I mean, you can for comment.
So maybe that would be the way to handle some of this, is just, on some of these, is review it to, I mean, refer it to the design review for comments.
Yeah, that's what Jenny was saying, it's not the application of them.
Right, you, you can't really, I mean, you can ask if the applicant will go to the design review board, but they're really not required to. But you could say, we want the design review board to look at these plans.
Right.
And give comment. There's nothing wrong with that.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I mean, maybe a way to get around some of this, as far as you're talking about your car dealership, for example. You know, might be one way to get around that aspect of it, because then you know what's going in along there. And I think that's important also.
Why aren't we doing all this for this coming town meeting? Why would we put it off?
If you were to do, you have to come up with all the language for it and then work out any issues. I would still want to explore having design standards for Route 9.
Yeah, but that, that you can do without, that doesn't have to become for town meeting.
No, but you would change the zoning to require they abide by those standards.
Right, but we could do that without having written the standards.
Right, but then you've gotta write the standards. That's not, that's not a short process.
No, but what I'm saying is, we don't have to do the standards before we put the requirement in. I mean, look at the federal government, how many things they pass, and they don't have the standards for. So we'd have to do that afterwards, but it would have to be done.
But in that situation, in that situation, we pass zoning that requires them to abide by certain design standards, right? So that zoning goes into effect at the fall town meeting. Somebody comes in in December and says, I'm gonna put a building up on Route 9. What are the standards? And we don't have standards.
Well, we do, we do have architectural things.
But if we worded in the zoning that it's certain standards, not guidelines, then we need to have those standards. So I would say, I would prefer to have the standards written and then say, or at least, you know, at the same time.
Well, we do have standards for downtown, but what Hazel was saying is that they're this thick.
Right, and I think Route 9 is gonna have, you're probably gonna want different standards than downtown.
So maybe we explore those standards separately, but the downtown one, we can still do that for town, yeah.
We still do that for fall meeting, right?
Yeah, I would say, I would definitely say, change the jurisdiction of design review board for downtown and gateway.
As much as is done for fall meeting as possible.
Okay.
Great.
Great, thank you for that feedback. And then the other bylaw that we were looking at, if this wasn't enough, the sign bylaw. And so, like I mentioned, we were hiring a consultant to do that. And so we were thinking that we could possibly have it ready for October town meeting. But if the planning board thinks that's too much, I mean, I think I can handle it, but it's also, I'm, I'm more so looking for feedback on, like, the downtown's a big change, right? And so what, what do you feel like the appetite of town meeting is going to be for a downtown plan and then a sign bylaw? Because signs can go either way. They can be controversial, they can be fine.
Yeah, one of the things that bothers me about that is the fact that design review has been reviewing signs. That's part of their thing. So I don't understand why we need this new sign bylaw.
There was, well, we're, we're proposing expanding it to the whole town, so including all of the districts, which we can do under the funding we have. But this was funding received as an earmark.
I know.
And I don't know, I don't know why that was there.
We had a sign bylaw that we passed not very long ago that, you know, is really fairly straightforward that we as a, as a design review board use.
Oh, the guidelines?
Yeah, the guidelines. So I don't understand why we have to do a new sign bylaw.
Well, there's a lot of clarifications that are needed in there. It's, it's kind of like what we just went over. There's a lot of redundancies. I haven't gone through it, but it would be hiring someone else to do it.
I know, but the thing is that you did for design review a really nice thing that we passed with design review that we have been using for signs, and it's very straightforward. And there's no reason why it cannot be expanded to cover more of the town without having to write a new.
But those are guidelines, right?
Not the guidelines.
She's talking about a law.
But I don't understand why we need, I mean, there are certain requirements. For example, the sign can't be taller than X amount of feet, can't be more than X number of square feet. We already have those things.
Right, but doesn't the downtown guidelines allow for like, what's it called? Not protruding signs, but.
Yeah, flag sign.
Yeah, you don't want those in other districts.
No, but they are allowed in the downtown area.
Right, but I think what Jenny's saying is the bylaw would cover the whole town, so you'd want different standards for different areas. So you would, the way I would see it is you incorporate those guidelines into the downtown officially and then take some as they fit other areas and then create new guidelines.
Well, it seems to me double work is what we're doing.
Yeah, probably.
That bothers me that we're spending money on something that I don't think we need to do. That's okay.
You said this is earmarked for sign bylaws?
Yep, specifically.
Like, what was the source?
What do you mean the source? It was an earmark.
Yeah, when was this, who's done a couple?
From the legislature earmark from?
Right, the legislature.
For sign bylaws?
Yeah.
Through like what program?
It was, it was in the same time as the wayfinding and branding, the sign bylaw, and then the purchase of the signs for the wayfinding. So those three things were all together at the same time, and we received all three, but they're for very specific things. The previous, two previous economic development coordinators ago had applied for this.
I mean, I think we're double working. I mean, that's what bothers me about it, is that, anyway, it's neither here nor there.
It was a result from the local rapid recovery program.
Yeah, it'll be interesting to see what they come up with. And I'm willing to look at what they'll come up with. It doesn't mean I'm gonna agree with it, but I'll look at it.
Yeah.
Let's do it for fall meeting. Seriously.
I'd wanna see them. But my concern is if we do, if we do a pretty big change to the zoning of downtown and the signs at fall town meeting, does that give the appearance that we're trying to sneak something by?
Why?
Because fall town meeting's not annual town meeting. People don't pay attention to it as much. We're doing a large-scale change to the downtown zoning and then adding on a sign bylaw, which is generally controversial to people at a.
Different articles, though, right?
I would assume so, yeah.
What'd you say?
Different articles, right?
Oh, yeah.
It would be at a, you know, a non-annual town meeting.
Well, we've hired somebody to do it, have we not?
We haven't completed the contract yet, but we are hiring someone.
Is that person going to have everything ready in time to do it before the October meeting or not?
They think it's possible.
Possible.
So we can work towards it, and if it's not, then it's not.
We can always make the call as we get closer to when the warrants going to close and our public hearings.
I just say, like, why wait?
Yeah.
I know, I know what you're saying.
Yeah, I just.
Obviously, that's not what anyone's trying to do.
I mean, I, I think.
People think we're trying to do it different.
I think the thing that's gonna be the key is to see what they come out with in comparison to what we are presently using.
Sure.
Because we have the, we, people are used to coming to us, design review. People in the downtown area are used to coming to design review for their signs. So I'll be interested to see what changes there are, and the, and people in the downtown area are used to this. You know, it's their usual thing. The one for Route 9, that might be a whole different kettle of fish, possibly.
And you might want different signage in the gateway district versus the downtown district, so.
So it could be, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
That's all I have for zoning, but.
When's zoning review committee gonna meet?
This time.
I was going to send out an email this week to see what everyone's availability is, but this was a huge hurdle to get over because I had to go through the two different use tables and, or two different dimension.
When we redid the zoning, Jim was here. What was that, a couple of years ago?
Mm-hmm.
It wouldn't change.
We had to go through, we read through everything, we changed so much. And I mean, we had to make, I think it was like over 100 changes at town meeting.
Yeah.
Not one question.
That's good.
Just, I mean, obviously, it's to improve everything and make it easier for people to look through.
Right.
I think it was when we were transferring it from the PDF to, was it Ecode?
The Ecode, yeah.
And that's where we had to make all the changes.
Right, right. Yeah, I remember seeing that, and, you know, that, that would have been a good opportunity to probably go through things in a little more detail, but that was a huge undertaking, you know? If I could just start from the first page of the zoning bylaw and rewrite the whole thing.
We read through so much of it, we're like, none of this applies to that.
Yeah, when we were going through the Ecode change, I talked to Jim, and I was like, why aren't we just changing all the zoning? He's like, oh, no, it's gonna change, it's gonna be all much more organized and cleaner. I'm like, okay.
Okay.
Here, online.
Okay, anything else, Jenny?
Not on the zoning. I, I was just gonna do my update.
Okay, when do your updates?
I'm sorry?
Updates?
Okay. I passed everyone out this postcard for the downtown plan.
I love it.
I think it's really great, and for you all and the public, if you go to the website, we created a specific webpage for this, and you can click on, actually, I'll go to it now while I'm here, so Westboro TV can see it. You can send in a comment. So people can go to the planning department. They can go to this link directly on the postcard, or they can go to the planning department, click on downtown improvement project, and it tells you everything about it here. The original downtown plan, we have our project goals, the projected schedule, what we've done for public involvement. So this talks about the upcoming meeting on June 11th, excuse me. And then if they have a question or comment, we have a project comment form that they can go to. And you can, it's, you cannot put your name in if you don't want to, or your email, but then the comment is there, so you can.
That's good.
You can make whatever comment you want. And then resources, so we have a map of the district, the original plan, the presentations and recordings from all the previous workshops, everything that we had done. So what we'll have for this meeting, we'll have the existing conditions. We'll have the survey work done. They did the traffic counting, the speed analysis, all of that stuff. We'll have that ready. And then the purpose of this meeting is to show the preferred triangle concept that was at the, that the public decided was the preferred concept, and really just hash out the, whether we want any changes to it, what changes those would be, and then get more public comments on them. So that's the purpose of that. So we're trying to really promote the heck out of this. Like I said, we're splitting up and going out to different businesses. We'll have yard signs to give out, and we're at, we have to ask select board permission to put them in the public way. We have a couple of sandwich board signs we're gonna be putting different places, so. And then it's on Facebook, so if you can share the event or like it, it always brings it up to people's, top of people's feeds.
So once we get to the end of this project timeline, where does it go from there? When do we put this into action?
Find some money.
Yep, so this would be for the preliminary design. So the next, we would have to apply for a grant to finish the design, and then another grant to do the construction. So the plan is for this to be mass works or potentially housing works through the state and not on the tip.
How would it be housing works?
If there's a housing component with it, like if you're connecting a housing development. For example, the DPW is applying for that sewer project for downtown, and that goes under housing works because it serves sewer capacity, serves housing with sewer capacity.
Great.
Anybody been to any meetings?
The, I wasn't able to attend, but the master plan implementation committee met yesterday. I haven't gotten. yesterday. I haven't gotten notes back yet on...
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I forgot to tell you. Tell everyone. They did a motion to dissolve the committee. I read your comments.
Okay, cool.
Yeah.
So we'll deal with that at our next meeting.
Did they approve the motion?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
So then we have to disband it formally. No, they're meetings, minutes.
Yes, so we have two sets of minutes. I made a couple changes to them, so I can read those out now. So April 1st, under the 165 Flanders Road, I just wanted to add, Member Gelsich makes a motion to approve the withdrawal without prejudice, adding the "without prejudice." And then, under the Master Plan Implementation Committee discussion, it says Member Gelsich appoints Christina as a liaison of the Planning Board. I just changed that to either Christina Kelleher or Member Kelleher, however would be consistent. And those are the only two changes to that one. And then on the April 15th, just some grammatical changes of capitalizing and taking out a "D" to make it the current tense. And then on the Open Space Preservation Committee Planning Board Representative, I want to strike, "The board agrees to vote for Gelsich next month." That seems weird. And then also, under Administrative Update, Emily, it's written as "Innes," but it's I-N-N-E-S.
Again, I'm going to go back to the preceding ones on April 1st, under 165 Flanders Road, where it says, "The Planning Board reads..." I believe that I read it probably because the Planning Board is all, doesn't read something that's in there. So I would just say, you know...
Chair Norris.
Chair Norris read the 165 Flanders withdrawal notice. It didn't make sense otherwise.
Did you guys want to look at the edits? Are you okay with those?
I'm good.
All right, so can I have a motion to approve the minutes of April 1st, 2025, with the edits proposed by us?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? And can I have a motion to approve the April 15th minutes with the edits proposed by Hazel and I?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Okay. Upcoming meeting dates, 5:20 and 6:03 at the moment. We are not having an executive session tonight, which I should have announced at the beginning and did not because the attorney for the town is meeting with the judge and the plaintiff in a, I've got a particular name, it's just a legal session.
Case management conference.
Yeah, on the 17th. And so there's no point in us having an executive session. We found out what had happened at that meeting. So we will hold an executive session sometime after they've had the meeting.
So that's on the 17th?
I think, I can't remember. I think it was the 17th. And whether it'll actually go that day or not, who knows? That's the other thing. Often, they don't. But that's where we are at the moment on that. Is there anything else that anybody would like to bring forward? If not, could I have a motion to adjourn? There a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, Espero TV.